Here.
Oh, and Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, I'm here. And Derek had already contacted us telling us he's not gonna be here tonight. Can I get a motion to excuse him?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Derek Gruber's absence tonight. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of excusing Councilmember Gruber, say aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose, say nay in your name. Okay, uh, do we have any agenda updates? I don't have any.
Uh, the fence that I asked for last time, uh, to maybe have on the agenda so we can maybe get it rolling before the summertime, uh, it was the presentation that I had last meeting for, uh, for Charlie Martin. I was wondering if we could maybe talk about that and maybe put that on the agenda.
Um, okay. You mean, you know, that wouldn't work in Council Concerns?
I don't know, I, I, I would like, I thought it was gonna be on the agenda. Um, so it'd be just nice to maybe have an option to take action on it, but I guess I could do that in Council Concerns. But I thought-
Did we reach out to him or did he reach out to us?
Yeah, he sent an email of his idea of the park to Michelle and then I forwarded a copy too. That I was hoping every council member got, but-
Oh, I don't, I don't think I sent it out to all of council, huh-uh. For that plan, we talked about it at the last one, Nolan.
Or we can send it out tonight, it's a quick read and we take some action, maybe.
Nolan?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
May I make, may I ask a question? Um, is this the gentleman, the Eagle Scout looking to do a project in the cemetery?
Uh, Eagle Scout looking at doing a project at the Centennial Park. Not the Centennial Park, sorry, the Fireman's Park.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot about, we just had an Eagle Scout ask about, um, one of the cemeteries of doing a project up there also, so that's why I'm a little bit confused.
Yeah, Nolan, we'll, uh, we'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that and then we'll just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine, too.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The checks on electronic fund transfers as follows, account payable for May 25th, 2021, check number 17154 to 17173, amount of sixty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Payroll from, uh, May 20th, 2021, in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars twenty-seven cents. And then we have the minutes of the May 11th, uh, 2021 meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion here? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone that's against the consent agenda, say nay in your name, please. Okay, we'll move on to the Police and Fire, uh, Chief Bland, or is there a representative of the Police Department on tonight? If, if there is a police member, uh, hit star three and so we can unmute you. How about the Fire Department, uh, Chief Oshadis, or any representative of the Fire Department on tonight? That wants to talk?
Uh, trying to unmute here.
We can hear you, Chris.
You're, you're good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I just would like to note quickly that our fuels crew will be starting, um, next week and, um, so we're looking forward to getting that going, we've got a really, a good, strong crew and a good, strong, uh, lead for them that will be out daily with them this year. Uh, and just want to reiterate that, um, a lot of work will be going on in the alleys in town and we really, you know, we just kind of need everybody to support that concept that that this is work that has to happen and it's, 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 you know, when things first get brushed out, people sometimes get emotional or, you know, they, they really like that tree or their, that shrub or whatever, but per our FEMA grant, we really have to brush out the alleys to the full public right of way, um. And so, to that end, I think we're gonna, I'm hoping to get it to you tomorrow to, to Mayor and to Sarah for approval, but to have a notice that'll go out with the water bills, with the utility bills, and let people know this work is going, gonna be going on this summer. Um, and they'll be just doing work to harden the city against the, uh, you know, the, what we don't want to have happen. And that's kind of all I got.
Alright, thanks, Chris.
And I think, I think Chief Bland was, I saw something dweep across, he might have been trying to get on also.
Yeah, star or asterisk three, yeah.
Chief Bland, if you hit star or asterisk three to raise your hand.
Well, the good news is the, the chief moved to Roslyn, so he lives in Roslyn now, so you guys can track him down.
That is good news. Okay, well, for the time being, we'll just move on to the committees, commission, staff, uh, do you have anything from the cemetery group?
Um, I do, I do, I'd like to actually talk about a couple of things that are happening this weekend, which go through the heritage, which go through the Cemetery Commission and the Heritage Club. Um, we have a couple of big, big events and everything, just so you know, we've been through the COVID safety plan, everything will be, follow the requirements in place, we've worked with the chamber closely to put this event on. Um, Friday, there will be, um, a kiosk hospitality area where people that have given information to the digital kiosk up there, um, will be given lessons and, um, information on how to use it uh, fluently and to add information, um, and seems like we're gonna have a pretty good turnout Friday for that. Uh, on Saturday, May 29th, um, at 10:00 AM, there's a new monument in the Italian, um, Silvia Pellicco Cemetery right next to, one cemetery away from the kiosk and they have a new monument and this will be the dedication to it. Um, and so I encourage people, if they'd like to join and need a vet, that'd be really neat to come and support. It's at 10:00 AM Saturday, at 1:00 PM Saturday, we will actually get to finally do the kiosk dedication ceremony that we've been put off for a year because of COVID. Um, there'll be music, there's gonna be live history portrayal storytelling with, um, the act with the theater in town, um, so there'll be some live acts if you're into that. Um, I think it'll be really neat to see how the interpretive goes, um, it's just sort of the beginning of a trial period. Um, and that will all happen Saturday and that's at 1:00 PM, so if anybody would like to join us up at the cemetery, there'll be some great events this weekend, um, and strongly encourage, um, uh, locals to get out and also ask others to come and join us up there, that'd be great, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, do we have anything from planning and historic preservation?
Uh, no, nothing, they're continuing to work on the master plan code, or master plan development code, um, the lighting code, trying to think what's on there, ADU. And then, um, they actually have that wildland ordinance as well, just to take a look at it. And then, uh, for CAC, uh, we did secure the funds from DNR finally and actually that contract or that agreement just came through and was sent to the attorney just before this meeting, so I attached the email um, with the verbal confirmation from DNR, just so everybody knows that we did get that money. Um, and then AFM also included a financial, excuse me, a financial report to date for the logging as well, um, so that's also attached under committees and commissions.
Kathy, did you want to add anything for your group?
Unmute.
Thank you, um, no, I haven't, I haven't been to a meeting yet, I'm looking forward to the first one, um, as Council liaison to the CAC. Um, and I'm hoping at some point to go out, um, in the field with AFM when they're around, I don't know if they've been around in the last two weeks or not, but I would certainly like to do that so I can get up to speed on this, um, so that's, that's where I'm at with that.
Okay, we'll make sure that, uh, we reach out to Eric and let him know that you're ready for a tour. Okay, uh, next up, uh, would be staff reports, so Bubba?
Yep. Hey, guys, um, uh, another long list, it's been going good, uh, we got the speed bumps up, um, on Second Street Hill, you probably noticed them there at Wyoming and Second. Um, Advantage Dirt's back truck came. We were able to locate all the utilities for the CIP project, the Roslyn Stormwater. Um, last week, uh, Theo and I took a trip to the reservoir, take a look at the cover and start putting together a plan for updating it, um, with a new one. We also found the valves for the bypass, which was, um, nice to know. Uh, Roslyn Fire came in early last week with us, on Wednesday, we washed Penn Avenue off so we can prep it for painting, um, I want to thank Sky and Craig for doing that, um, you know, helping us out early in the morning. We started painting parking stalls today in crosswalks, you might have noticed if you drove down Penn Ave. Um, we'll also be out tomorrow continuing on that painting, we gotta do some stop bars, one crosswalk left and then probably in the next couple of weeks we'll get the yellow, um, stripes for the no parking and the fire station. Uh, I'd also like to thank RDA, I didn't get to, uh, last meeting for the donation of the money so we could have the sweep up them over from the other side and sweep uptown. Continuing on the parks and, uh, sem, and the mowing of the memorial gardens at the cemetery, um, all the irrigation's on, we went through everything, we reset timers, um, controller nodes, we did find a leak at Runji Field on, uh, it's in a T with, that connects the two, uh, with electronic valves, so we'll get that probably fixed here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we also did cleanup and we mowed the future parking lot next to Runji Field, so we took some old concrete. I mowed that, I'll probably end up mowing again Friday. Um, mulch day at the playground is June 1st, we got TE Walrath Trucking, we'll be delivering a hundred yards. Uh, we'll have two trucks coming, fifty yards apiece of the engineered wood fiber from Swanson's Bark and Mulch in Longview, Washington. Um, they should be here around noon, so have the backhoe over there, we'll also have some extra hand tools. So if anybody'd like to come down and help the crew spread some mulch, it'd be much appreciated. Um, other than that, like I said, everything else is going good, so.
Um, on that stuff, I don't think so, Theo, are you, want to say anything about, no?
No, there's questions, I'm happy to-
Okay, no, I don't think I have anything.
Good update, Bubba.
Thanks, Bubba.
Any problem? Okay, so next up then, we'll move on, uh, former councilmember Hadfield, uh, Leah has a presentation on the pay to park thing that she was working on. Leah?
Yeah, I'm here and thank you so much for having me, you guys can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay. I've got a very low-tech presentation here. So, share my screen.
Yeah.
And, is that, alright?
Yep.
Alright, so, um, you should have all, well, it's in the packet, is the, um, a PDF document from the company Park Mobile, I talked to several, this one is, uh, I would say the best solution for Roslyn for this type of pilot project, there's no upfront costs. Um, so, uh, basically, they would provide some signage and you can see a sample here, um, kind of similar, it would look something similar to that is the type of signs that they would pay, you know, pay for. Something really different for design than, you know, that, there would be some cost with that. Um, but it would have the city logo, um, you could do the brown color that the other National Historic District signs are on instead of that green in the main area, if, um, it was council's will. And then you can see on here, um, some of the features that they provide. And another thing that is really attractive about the Park Mobile option is that they have a lot of different ways to access, so they've got apps, um, which, you know, people that might already be using it in another city would have. Or you can snap that QR code or even text and get a link to go online. Um, and a lot of them, you don't even have to necessarily register, you can do an easy guest checkout. And there's even a way that you can, uh, call in, so you could use, if you don't have a smartphone, you could still call in and pay over the phone that way, and then they also take, um, payment via credit, debit, Apple Pay, Google Pay, PayPal, so pretty much any payment option, you know, um, is gonna be available. And I'm gonna scroll down here a little bit. They've got some, just kind of simple instructions on how you use the, how the customers would access for purchasing the parking. And, you know, for Roslyn, there's probably just gonna be one zone focused on the commercial district. Um, but there's, you know, obviously flexibility that could be built in. And then there's, they have a little illustration here of kind of the steps you take and, you know, it's pretty quick and easy to plug in your information. Um, I would propose a, you know, twenty-four hour parking visitor day pass for five dollars a day to start, I think the value of parking is actually higher in Roslyn than that, but as a pilot program, you know, council may choose to start with something that's very accessible for most people coming to town. And I did draft in my email, um, a, just a sample press release that could be used, um, to send to the local papers and let them know about the changes, um, as well as, you know, potentially share with other businesses or organizations as needed. Um, and, you know, I've kind of described it as a visitor day pass, as visiting visitors. Um, people that are doing their regular business in Roslyn for work, attending religious services, checking their mail, picking up food to go, you know, wouldn't be expected, of course, to be purchasing this pass. It's really for people that are coming to, um, for leisure and for recreation. Up back here. And so we'll talk about the next thing, which is money. So here is a, excuse me, sample breakdown, if we had a five dollar parking fee, their, uh, convenience fee for every transaction is thirty-five cents. And you can either absorb that or pass it on to the customer. And then for Park Mobile to be the credit card processing merchant of record, they charge a three percent plus fifteen cents per the total transaction. Um, so, come down here a little bit more and you can see that with their math there, if the total paid by the customer was five dollars and thirty-five cents, um, then that amount to the city of Roslyn would be four dollars and seventy cents. Um, if there's tax in there, then that would be, which I'm assuming the city needs to charge tax on the parking, so that would be included in what is charged as the total for the car, card processing. But you figure, you know, at least chugging five dollars, you make about four dollars. Or, you know, six and five, whatever, um, would be, you know, what council decides on, um. Just a couple other things to kind of think about for next steps would be, um, where exactly these signs would go, I would assume on Pennsylvania, it, within the commercial district, uh, as well as a Pioneer Park in Runji Field, and it sounds like if you're having that, um, lot on Third and Arizona cleared out, that you could put signs as well in there. Um, I think it would be worth, when it's appropriate, a discussion with Forterra on whether they would allow us to install those signs, even though it's not city property, um, if they're allowing public access. As well as any other property owners that may have access and, you know, the city could do some kind of share with, on the cost, excuse me. Um, and then as well, so you would have some kind of map, um, when the users go online to show what parking areas are available. And as well, um, we might consider some signs, um, at the park for directional parking so people know it a parallel park there. And, so are there any questions? That's kind of the meat and potatoes of it.
Leah? Leah, Jeff? Do they, um, what is the, is it, so, is it, do they have like packages for purchase, like depending on how many, like, does it matter how many stations we put through the city, is there a base price of cost for the software? Um, what does all that cost-wise look like?
They just take it in there, um, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to get my WebEx all back together here and get maybe someone can turn my screen off. Sorry. Um, so they basically charge that thirty-five cent fee.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, it's, and then in the merchant and record, there's no other cost to-
Okay.
For, there is access, so you could log in because there is, can be an enforcement function. So, um, a user could log in on, you know, a tablet or a smartphone or something and log into the backend, uh, client side and be able to check vehicles. So, uh, so the users put in their license plate, so that's how you do enforcement.
Okay, okay, and so, so this really just like a ba, a fee-based app is all it really is then? Um, as you use the app to park, you pay the fee and, and then, so how does the, does the funding go directly, does, uh, does their software then basically take out what their fees are and send them to the public pay? And then ours would go into a separate account that's accessible to the city then, is that how that works or does it go to them and they send it?
They would just remit payment at the end of each month, um, to the city by check or ACH.
Okay, okay, wow, pretty convenient.
Yeah, it seems like a very convenient solution.
Yep, and it doesn't take a lot out of our pocket to, to initiate to start, it would, it's sort of a co, a non-cost to experiment on what type of, um, use we get out of it. You know, um, it's a free trial.
Yeah, it really, it really is, I mean, except for, you know, maybe a couple other, like I said, like directional type parking signs. Um, or if, you know, I'm, I know they can print, provide at least, you know, half a dozen or eight signs, I don't know how many signs total you could get out of them, but, um,
Right.
You know, if you need a few extra, I think they would throw them in or have a nominal fee.
Yeah, no, that's great.
By a lot of areas or, but yeah, I, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, um, you know, there are, there is one challenge that I thought of as I was putting this together, which is, uh, most people in Roslyn park on the street for their homes and so trying to delineate commercial versus residential parking and I think that would be on the app, so the zone that you could park in.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's a pilot program for sure and I think reaching out to the public, um, as well is important so that other, um, you know, residents and people who come to Roslyn all the time because they live right nearby, that they're not, they can bypass, but they're not being required.
They're not feeling obligated that they have to be the purchaser, it's really encouragement of tourism to purchase and, um, newcomers and day, day, day trippers and so forth, so, um, well, good, great homework for us, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, tha, thank you Leah for doing this work, I, I, are you, um, are you envisioning, envisioning this as a voluntary payment, is that what, okay, and, and so, how will residents know that they're not required to, um, uh, pay parking?
That's the outreach part, really, I mean, word of mouth, making sure businesses know.
Water bill.
At least to the paper, putting it on the face, you know, on Facebook pages and groups, um, with a little bit of outreach, I think.
And so, um, and, and then the s, the signs that, um, that they, that they provide us, um, they don't, there's nowhere on the sign itself to, to put anything that says this is a voluntary payment or, so I, I would assume we'd have to like, um, put an additional, add an additional sign to it in some way?
Well, I, I mean, I think it could say either, you know, that is a potential that it's, that it's framed actually as a donation to the city. Um, you know, when I was thinking of it, it's sort of like, if, if it says visitor day pass, you know, the people that are gonna follow the rules anyways are gonna say, oh, I'm a visitor, I'm gonna buy the day pass. And the sign, you know, has sort of a basic parking-looking sign. Um, it does require that it has that Park Mobile logo with their green symbol on it. Um, but we can, you know, kind of play around with some of the other colors if we need to. So, to your point, Kathy, it could be either that we just say it's a donation or it's not, you know, it's somehow it's, that it's for non-residents, um, would be another way to word it, I mean, it's, it's certainly a, it's a test, right, to see what happens and then I can lay into that, it's just the important part.
I didn't see any place on the sign where you would actually be able to put, I mean, I, I'm assuming we'd have to add an additional sign below the parking sign itself to explain some of this, because I didn't see any place on the sign where you would have the opportunity to, um, to add that information.
Well, I think you'd either pick, you'd pick some wording that's either visitor parking pass or the council thinks it's really important to say it's like, like a donation basically, which it technically is, right, if we're not doing active enforcement, but if there is enough revenue generated, um, you know, this would go into the general fund, I believe. But that revenue may actually generate enough for enforcement, um, you know.
And if, uh, um, how would you enforce, um, if a car didn't have, um, how would, how would the enforcer know whether the, the person parking in this space was a resident or a visitor, how would that?
That would, so a, a piece of enforcement and a cost to enforcement would be something for all residents on their vehicle that states that it's, that they are exempt from purchasing parking.
Good.
Which to me is definitely, you know, a few steps down the road. The, the, um, representative that I spoke with, Kristen Locke at Park Mobile, said that they find about eighty percent of people or their research, you know, suggests that about eighty percent of people are just going to follow the rules anyways. Um, if they see a sign, it's just kind of natural, they're trained, I guess, if you will. Um, but, um, I think that within the app or the web-based experience, um, whatever the user would access, that we could have some information that it's, you know, reiterate it's non-resident.
So I guess, I, I'd be in favor of, of doing an experiment like this on, um, a, a, a city parking lot, for instance, and finding out if people actually will pay money voluntarily. Um, I'm, I don't, I'm not excited about, um, putting a bunch of signs downtown, um, to encourage people to, you know, voluntarily pay us money when we can't even really get them to voluntarily, um, park in a reasonable manner. It seems like a, to me, like, um, a pretty, like it could be a dubious, um, endeavor to just-
Well, yeah, I hear you on that, um, I think that actually having signs though would legitimize where there is parking, you know, and then of course it's on the city to ensure that where there is it supposed to be parking or kind of if you're entering a residential zone, that that's not the place for visitor parking pass. That's gonna come with its own challenges for sure, um, just because of the nature of Roslyn and how it's, you know, the residential and commercial areas overlap some. Excuse me.
I think if we put a couple of signs that just talk about, you know, an encouraging donation for this parking plan in a few locations, I mean, I think any new plan's gonna be tough to get going. But the fact that there's no investment really besides a pay app that you started with and really word of mouth to start it, I don't think there's anything to lose to start the program and to be honest with you, number one, I'd probably go down and see, um, the bike shop and I know that they would be more than happy, especially realize that if we were making money, I can't say, I don't mean making money, but in the sense that we're able to create funds that help maintain more prevalent parking and more designated parking in those areas, because that's what some of this funding could be used for, um, that I think is worthy of a try, I, I, I don't know if there's any negative about- Um, that I think is worthy of a try. I, I, I don't know if there's any negative about starting it and seeing if everybody pays. I think we start, you start it and we, it starts with encouragement as we run into people and talk to the bike shops and other, because a lot of it will be a, a, a big percentage of mountain bikers and outdoor recreationists. And I think as word of mouth goes, um, you know, if I'm watching a guy hit an app and go, hey, is this paid parking? They go, yeah, it's visitors, it's encouraged. I would think that that wears off on people as it's becoming a normal weekend place for a lot of the west side. Um, I, I think habitually it'll become, um, a habit for people and they'll know that, hey, this is a good deal. Let's go park for five bucks and we don't have to worry about anything for the day. I, 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 I don't know that there's a lot of negative to think about it, but move forward and try it and build on it.
Yeah, I think especially trying just maybe two or four signs downtown. Um, I don't really care for the voluntary thing. Uh, if, if somebody from the lake or Cle- Clealum or even Roslyn's gonna park downtown and, and go hang out at one of the local establishments and that's the only place to park, I expect them to pay five bucks to park there or go two blocks down and find a parking spot off the street. Um, but if you just have two designated spark, parking spots or four and making that little bit of income, growing this project and then moving it to the park as well. Cause I think the park you could have a lot of designated parking spots along the park, not the whole thing. And then our new parking lot that we finally just established at the park. Um, there's probably some other places like the city hall that we could probably put something like this too. But I don't wanna put it all downtown because I think you should have that freedom of, oh, I, I got a good parking spot, I can pull into here. Oh, it's not the paid one, cool. Oh, it's the paid one, I gotta pull in, grab a pizza and leave. That's like, I don't think anybody will get a ticket or care about those little circumstances, but it will be the people that, oh, I'm gonna spend the whole evening at base camp and watch the movie that's playing. I'll pay five bucks. And if we have all four spots taken, the city of Roslyn gets fifteen dollars, cool. We didn't do anything at all except for put up some signs, took four of our parking spots and made them getting monetary value now. So, that's kind of a no-brainer, especially the no, the no upfront cost. Signs are up to us. Yes, we have to pay for Bubba's, our public works time, we have to pay for some admin time. But in overall, let's say five, ten years, and we actually make a really good solid plan out of downtown, the park and maybe some other areas, this could be a good thing for, oh crap sidewalk projects and stuff like that. So, I, and I appreciate your time Leah. Thank you for, uh, joining us and having this presentation outside of city council.
Is, is any, is anybody interested in going ahead and just moving this project forward right now? And making a motion and we move this project forward to make another step ahead so we can start some form of implantation, implementation on this?
So moved.
Second.
Sure, it moved to move forward on this vote?
And, and so for discussion, I'd like to bring it up to the public works, talk it, talk it over with Bubba, uh, Jeff, Derek and come up with kind of a plan of where, again, if it's two or four or an overall plan of what we're seeing for parking.
Yeah, so Nolan, are you thinking then maybe just, uh, public works meets in two weeks and then bring it in front of council on the agenda that same two weeks?
If that's what works for everybody else.
I think it's great. We can propose some proposed parkings and we can get in discussion from the rest of council and they can give our input on if they don't like some of the parking or wanna move it to other parking, uh, to broaden it. But, um, yeah, I would, I mean, she's put a lot of work into this. I think it's, it's, it fits us. I would like to move forward. So if that's what it takes, let's, let's make a motion and move this thing forward and let's come back with a plan on the next meeting and, um, start implementing this.
And so just a heads up for public works, we'll probably meet onsite. So we won't probably be meeting on a WebEx meeting, just so we're giving some public notice right now. We'll probably meet downtown and really try to feel it out as best as we can.
Let's do a walking tour together with public works crew.
Okay, I don't know that we need to vote to move this forward. I told us to form moving it forward, uh.
Okay.
So, and, and I like the idea of you guys walking it out.
I will, oh, just let you all know I will get the, um, service agreement from Park Mobile so I can pass that off on to you all and, you know, take care of the logistical side of that.
Leah, would you like to join our walkthrough as we go through? Um, you've done a lot of the parking. It'd be great to get your input as we move forward.
Sure, yep.
Cool.
Thank you.
Can we look if we can do it on nine oh three?
That's a good question.
I think we would be able to because it's our right of way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll let Nolan send out the date for public works and send you an invite Leah.
Okay.
Is that all right Nolan?
Yeah, yep.
All right.
So yeah, Leah, thank you very much for all that work.
Awesome.
In your retired years here.
Thank you Leah.
Thank you Leah.
Night.
Okay, so next up, uh, we'll move on to the citizen comments. Um, first up, we've got Karen Bognozko. I think if you're on, we need the asterisk three. Better?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So this is my first meeting, so I'm not sure, um, kinda status. I heard Bubba talk about the stormwater and, um, that's one of the issues that I wanna bring up. Our house, um, four oh five Nevada has a storm drain that has failed. I'm not sure if you're aware of that Bubba yet or not, um, but it failed in February of twenty nine, twenty twenty. And, uh, we have a lake that occurs every time it rains or if the snow melts. And in doing so, our basement is flooded with three feet of standing water every time. So, I was just wondering if there's any plan. It sounded like you were looking at doing some stormwater management and what the plan is to mitigate some of the stormwater that's been occurring over a year in our basement. And then also this year I noticed it has leached through the soil across the road over to our neighbor's property. And I think you're aware of that because you put sandbags up and I spoke to Adam about it. Um, so his property is starting to flood as well. So, cause that water's just sitting there for periods of time. So I didn't know, um, kinda just wanted to find out what the status was and what the plan is, um, to move forward so that we don't get flooded before this fall comes again with the rains. If there is a plan. I mean, I don't know if we need to have another meeting or, or what, you know, the path forward would be.
Oh yeah, I guess. I guess we don't, we don't respond on public work or public.
This is just a comment session, not a discussion session.
But we will bring that up at public works. That has been on our list of, uh, of topics, so we are sorry that it's still happening.
Okay, so I just, well, could you keep me up to date, I guess, on an email or something or if you wanna call? Just so I know, I, I just wanna know if something's gonna be done before the fall, if, if there's a possibility of that happening. That's all.
Karen, this is the mayor and yes, we will, uh, make sure that, uh, you're kept in the loop.
Okay, yeah, cause we can't make any repairs until, um, that's fixed. That was all I had.
Okay, thank you Karen. And next up, we have, uh, Larry Shoemaker. And, and just so everybody knows, uh, where the comment period for each citizen is at three minutes max, so. Le- Larry, are you on?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Perfect, uh, yeah, my name's Larry Shoemaker. We, uh, are just finishing up a house at one hundred West Oregon Avenue that, uh, Pacific Green Homes is building. And, uh, we had a, a, a permit, uh, issue on our retaining wall and, uh, it's still being held up. I, I, I think just that, uh, Michelle and her, uh, is just, uh, doesn't have enough support staff. It, it is, is my understanding. And so I'm hoping that the city can find a way to provide support to her. Um, just for a little bit of a timeline, uh, we, we submitted the, the permit on December seventeenth. Uh, there was an email on January fifth that the permit was determined to be complete. Uh, on March twenty fourth, um, I inquired and Michelle mentioned that permits can sometimes take several months in jurisdictions. Um, but, um, I think at that time there was maybe seven permits in front of mine. On April seventh, there were three permits apparently in, in front of mine in an email from Michelle. Uh, and that typically she can get to one or two permits per week. Um, but as of today, I, it, it still has not been finalized. And so I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that, uh, our house is completed, uh, but for this permit, uh, finalized. And we can't use our house, uh, to the fullest extent. I can't close out on my construction loan until I have an occupancy permit. Uh, it's costing, so it's, it costs her accruing, uh, I can't get into a final loan, uh, on it. And so I just wanted to bring that to council's attention and hopefully you can find some way to provide support to Michelle, um, so that she can get to these permits. I'm assuming I'm not the only one, well, I can't be the only one in the city that's waiting on permits, so.
Okay, thank you Larry.
You bet.
And ne- next up, uh, is Bill Dorfield.
And I don't see him on here, so if he can.
Bill, yeah, we don't, uh, if you do the asterisk three, star three to raise your hand so we can mute you, unmute you. Uh, Bill, we'll come back to you if you are on. Um, so next up after Bill would be Doug Kilgore.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Doug.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm glad the council is looking at options for additional revenue for the city. But I'm concerned about this proposal for volunteer paid parking, both because of the sign pollution that I think it would create downtown and the likelihood that it will create an entitlement for out-of-towners to place their cars right in the middle of our commercial district for the whole day, um, when others may wish to come and go. I, I would ask the council to consider alternatively a five percent lodging tax to apply to all hotel rooms and, uh, Airbnb or home rentals to provide revenue that actually directly relates to the impact of outside visitors and that could be actually collected and, and which is a normal municipal tax on lodgings. Thank you.
Thank you Doug. Uh, next up is Ellie Baloo. Getting it?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ellie.
Okay, uh, my name's Ellie Baloo, one four five Fifth Street. Um, once again, I am going to point out that key content for tonight's night meeting was not made available for the public until after the deadline for written comments and the deadline to sign up to speak. Um, I want clarification please if the council receives this information as late as the public does. Um, tonight we're talking thirty-six pages. Um, some things that are not included either as agenda items and the actual information was not included for the public. Earlier is a very critical, uh, letter from Jen Watkins, uh, the DNR about the contract with the city, which is dated five seventeen and authorizes, uh, an active period from five seventeen to six thirty. Secondly, the state public works information from Phil, not an agenda item and not included. Um, I will also point out that there are items on the agenda that include only acronyms. And since there's no support material, how a person is to know what a BLA or a TIP is, um, is quite questionable to me. My second topic for comment is forestry. First of all, the AFM receipt of five twenty-one has no fur included. It's only the pine, which I think is kind of interesting considering fur is the commercial, uh, timbering ball. Uh, secondly, I'd like to respond to the mayor's comments about, um, DNR being happy about, um, the current practices in the forest. I would like to point out this actually means nothing relative to the more stringent and specific practices and goals of the land stewardship plan that the city is bound by, um, such as ground disturbance, uh, invasive weed protections and on and on. Um, I would also like to point out and to have the record show once again, the city never did CIPA on this FPA. It only did it on the previous LPA. I would also like to point out that there's no information, uh, for the public regarding recreational access to the Roslyn Forest while the logging is going on. It's not posted downtown. My third topic, um, is the budget. We're entering June. There are no, the first quarter report, um, has not yet been made generally available for the public. I looked through what minutes and meeting notes I could find for this year and I don't see that it's included in any council, um, minutes. I think that it's very important to have concurrent and, uh, available budget documents. My fourth point is Rod, Roslyn's regional sewer agreement, uh, with Clealum and other communities. Um, I am concerned that, um, the connections structurally available, um, will not be available for Roslyn in the Fort Worth development because of Clealum, uh, continuing to exceed its allocation. Um, I'd also like to support the comments of Doug Solwar. Thank you.
Thank you Janine, or Ellie, excuse me, I was looking at the list. So next up is Janine Brodin.
All right. Good afternoon, evening, most evening. Thanks for having me. As a city council, decisions about infrastructure, I ask that integrity is always considered while making both large and small decisions. Indeed, it's a key component of the city's comprehensive plan. One examples of a small decision is the choice of poles. We have some poles downtown that are round and some that are square. It's a small kind of difference, but the round poles are those that were approved and the square ones were not. If new signage comes in, they should be, that should be considered. All of signs should be considered while the Roslyn planning historic preservation does not, traditionally, it may have changed, make decisions about signage, usually planner does. They have been consulted initially. For example, when the Kititas connector signs came in, uh, there were several designs and the planning commission, um, recommended one that were used. I'm very concerned about these parking signs. I'm very concerned about parking, about signage clutter. It's, it's a, it can very much change the look of downtown. Another patient of beside signs, uh, historic integrity of structures. We've done a bunch of surveys of properties, fifty-two percent of the properties are, um, contributing. Um, I've recently been asked by two property owners how to get on the historic register. One is the Cometa boarding house on Washington Street, which was in, used as a boarding house in nineteen sixty and the other Benzac house on West Idaho. Getting these on the register might seem small, have seventy, I'm sorry, twenty-seven properties on the register. The more properties we register, the stronger our historic integrity. And also, those property owners have the opportunity to get a large tax write-off for any materials, any development, any design they do, you, they do to keep them historic. So I just wanna reiterate signage, very concerned about this discussion about forward with these parking signs without talking with the planning commission and at least getting their input. It's very, very easy, signage clutter, and I wish council would slow down, think about this. Thank you for the time.
Thank you Janine. So next up, we've got new business. Uh, first up is the BLA, which is the business and license ordinance.
So this is, uh, this, Michelle, this is, um, just for, this is moving towards, um, having Department of Revenue do our city business licenses. So, uh, we're not adopting this tonight. It's just for your review. The attorney has reviewed it. Um, so this will come before you for actual adoption at the next one. It's not something we have a whole lot of say in what we change. It's just a requirement to have the state be able to process our business licenses. Um, but anyway, it's, it's there. So if you have concerns or questions, um, you could ask anytime before the next meeting, actually.
Any discussion here, council?
Uh, the renewal process. Just reading that really quick. They're gonna be sending out letters to every business to ask for renewal or, I haven't been able to read it yet, the license renewal part. Like how are we gonna make sure businesses are getting business licenses? Because what I've heard from businesses is they don't have their business license. And I always tell them, well, please go get your business license. They forget and it's the end of the year, so why do I have to get it for this year? So are they gonna be, how, what's the renewal process? So are they gonna be, how, what's the renewal process look like that on their side?
Uh, I mean, it would be the same. It's still up to them to actually go to the Department of Revenue site and and purchase the license. So it's still a honor system, so to speak, I suppose. Um, so I mean, it's it's not any different than now. Um, it's just a little bit easier for them to be able to purchase it just when they're doing, like they're, they're being no taxed or whatever they're doing through the Department of Revenue monthly. They can purchase their business license at the same time. So it makes it a little bit easier, a little bit, um, you know, all one stop shop instead of having to go because they can buy for multiple city business licenses on that site rather than having to go to each individual city.
Can they, do they still have the opportunity to get a business license at the office? Does it say somebody doesn't have a computer or smartphone? Is there a way they can get one of these by coming into our office one day when we're COVID open?
Um, so there may be for this, I I'll have to double check. There may be for this interim period, but ultimately, no, there will be no option. So the state is making everybody go to this.
Yeah.
We're um, we're part of this initial process, but eventually, no. Um, I'm not sure about this interim where it's not a full requirement for every municipality to join, but um, there might be an option there for that, but when they move forward, it'll just be something that only revenue will handle.
Yeah.
Okay, like Michelle, uh, it that'll be an agenda item uh for you guys to the, to vote on, I believe, next time.
Yeah, next up, the next meeting.
And as you said, this is a state requirement. They're they're making all the municipalities go through this. Uh, next up, we've got a parking fee.
Point of order, point of order. Um, I just wanted to make sure that all the people that signed up for citizens' comments were heard. And I do notice that one of the call in users has their hand raised. Um, so I I just want to make sure that we heard from everyone.
I I think it was Ellie that had her hand raised.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Hey, you're correct, though. I mean, Bill Dorfeld uh did not speak. Bill, if you're on and you want to raise your hand, we can certainly get you in here.
Star three.
Star, star three, asterisk three. Thank you, Kathy. So next up is the parking fee discussion. Um, Michelle, you want to handle?
So in our new um parking and loading standards that were adopted, I guess it would have been February of twenty. Um, there is a section in there and in the attached email, it's cited um that the city can um adopt a parking fee in lieu of providing off street parking. So we have currently not exercised that as a city. We have not adopted a fee. Um, we have applicants that are wanting to see the city pursue that or leave it as an option. Um, and so this basically is just to have a discussion of of how the council feels or which direction we want to go. If we, if we just want to leave it the way that it is and reserve that right for the future or if that's something we want to go down the road of exploring and developing a fee that can be provided in lieu of providing that off street parking requirement.
Sorry, Michelle.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
So our parking and loading standards chapter within the code has a provision within it that the city can't, here, I'll actually, I'll just quote it just a second. I had just had the email up just a second ago. Um. It actually states, um. Let's see. So it states upon adoption of an appropriate off street parking fee by the city, project sponsors may propose to make a voluntary payment in lieu of providing off street parking, subject to city approval. In order for them to exercise that option, number two, we have to actually go through the process of doing a study and actually adopting a fee that would be in lieu of providing off street parking, so that that is an option for applicants. Right now, we have not gone about following that process and adopting a fee. But at this point, it's not something that they can exercise because there is no fee to pay in lieu of that off street parking. Um, and and this individual is pushing to have the city um go down that road and examine that. Um, and he's got kind of his case lined out. Um, basically, a- and this is not just from this property owner, actually, but um, you know, there's been an argument that providing off street parking is not um conducive to the historical nature of Roslin, um, at least in some of the areas. Um, and so I think what they're wanting the city to explore is other options to maintain something that is more conducive to the existing condition. Um, but obviously that's a double edged sword. We've gone both ways. Um, parking is a huge issue. And so that was part of the discussion behind adopting this in the first place is to try to put some, take some pressure off of that. So, um, anyway, it it's up to you guys as far as if you want to go down and pursue, actually, it would require a parking or a fee, a study to determine what that fee would be. Um, and so we could go down that road and so that that would be an option. It's it's not gonna be an overnight thing, obviously. Um, but it's gonna cost money to have that study done. Um, this this discussion is basically to just get a little vote of the council of what, what direction you guys want to go. If you want to leave it the way that it is and and not pursue that at this time, or if we want to pursue that so that it is an option for applicants as they come in.
Uh, I got a question. If if, you know, if we go down this route, we don't, as far as I know in a city, your public works or planning is um, we have no designated parking, whether somebody wanted to pay to get out of their parking um, of the commercial parking where they have to have their parking spot. You know, we haven't even designated an area where that money would go to provide public parking. So to me, to say that we want to do that yet, we need to have a plan ahead of it of where that public parking would be that this money would go to, to to fit these in because you know, we have limited downtown business areas. Um, that, let's say, let's say we have six. Three of them or four of them come in and want to buy their way out of it. We haven't solved a single bit of our parking problems that we have. I think full lots are definitely capable of providing a alley access parking. Uh, it may not be the most convenient for it, but that's the way it goes. Um, and I also think the due diligence of buying property that actually fits our our rules is important. Um, and I also feel that if this is pushed by a particular owner or a particular business, maybe they should be paying for the the fee structure itself or the study itself to see where that goes. Um, um, I just, you know, we just put this parking thing in plan, what, a year and a half ago, two years ago? And we're just starting to even get a feel for it uh as it's working its way through. But um, I have a hard time trying to negotiate a pay plan when we don't even have a designated pay area that we would put that money towards to create parking.
I I concur and I don't think we need another plan to put on the shelf with the thirty other plans that are on that shelf.
Yeah.
I like that, uh, Jeff. I think you just sold me on that. Uh, we don't need to keep putting plans up. We need to just go with what we have, figure out what we, what we have and then maybe come back to it later on in life. But uh, yeah, it's kind of a weird piece of property of what we're looking at. Um, but yeah, I I would still go with that, the code.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess just to be clear, while this is the pro property owner that's actually, you know, lined it out in writing, there are others. This is, this is not unique to him. So I just want to make that clear. Not that that makes a difference one way or the other, but I, it's just, it's just for the record.
Can we?
But it's also, we have existing businesses that have been in place that don't fall under the new rule that we had applied, which aren't equal comparisons and um, it's it's very clear in the code that parking is needed to be provided. Um, and you just, you know, individuals decide to make those purchases or investments themselves. Um, besides the the policy that's in place.
Or that to be created, oh, sorry, Kathy.
Oh, I just, I I think we'd have a a problem to, I mean, there's, there's, there are um more vacant lots available downtown for development. And if we go ahead and uh you know, allow people to buy out of having to provide um parking, then um I mean, at some point, we're gonna end up with with a lot more cars than we already have downtown and we've got a whole lot. So I'm 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 dubious about this idea too, along with the rest of you.
Uh, it'd be nice to see how much that study would cost if we ever have to go down that road, but I think that study's probably gonna be pretty spendy where I don't think the city has time or the funding for it.
Yeah, I would agree, Nolan. I I'm I'm not positive, but my guess is is in the neighborhood of potentially what we spent on that stormwater study as well.
We might be able to get an estimate without uh any cost, just to find out what that would be. But uh, I agree with what you guys were saying. You know, letting people cash out, not creating parking is only gonna make a bad problem much worse. Any other comments here, council? Hold on, let's um, we'll move on to the council.
Never mind, I'll I'll bring it up in council concerns. Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, you're okay. I would say, yeah, we'll move on to council concerns. Uh, you know, I'll go first. Uh, Theo put an email or put a, Michelle put a text link up for everybody in the staff area from Theo's and Ellie made reference to it as well. And it was just a couple of funding things that we're looking at. Um, uh, one of them was brought up. Uh, I think it was two weeks ago by uh one of the citizen comments. Looking into that, I think Willie will uh apply for the public works monies and uh and see how that goes. Uh, we might try to, the pre-engineering work that we need for the transmission line, maybe we can take it from there and then maybe that would bring down the amount that we would need to borrow from USDA uh down. And also look better to USDA on on us, you know, getting our feet in in the project.
Okay.
And then, and then he uh included uh other funding sources in the email. So and and we've seen all these before, but just keep looking at it because the the different projects we want from the storm and the transmission line and future parking, you know, improvements around City Hall and such. Uh, we just need to keep the public works team uh moving forward and and our engineer moving forward on funding sources. And uh, so I just want to make sure everybody was on board with that as we uh start going after this stuff. And then when we do go after it, as if we get them, we'll tell you. If we don't get them, we'll tell you, but uh.
Okay, great.
I'll probably bring Theo in, I don't know, soon, within a month, let's say. And he could probably do a presentation of where he's at and what and what we're looking at.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brent, do as much as you can. That, this is perfect. Yeah, just keep rolling. I have uh two updates to give, like. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were done.
No, go ahead, Tom. You're up.
I have two updates. One, um, I actually reported to the council and the mayor and which I have already, the mayor and the treasurer. The county commissioners agreed to give us twenty thousand dollars for the uh sidewalk repair in front of uh base camp. Um, it was a number of meetings. Um, they're gonna use part of the one oh nine money, which we give out in cog, but they've already approved it, so cog doesn't have to approve it. So that's been uh been promised and and granted. So uh, big thanks to the three commissioners I spoke with and met with. Uh, they did a great job. The other thing I want to throw out and this goes to regards to the consolidated lodging tax committee. We had a meeting this past Friday. Um, we're still in this COVID period, so some of the events that we had ranked higher um, either didn't go or were going to go at a reduced amount. And if you remember, when I reported on this way back in the first part of the year, I was very disappointed that we didn't get the cemetery thing this weekend on there. And they wanted to reopen this whole thing again. And we, our, our, our group, the Roslin group, really thought that and and they agreed that we should use the original scores. Um, and not go back and reevaluate. So they're gonna do a brief survey of what events are going and what of the lodging tax money they're gonna use. But as it stood at the end of that meeting, there's about twenty five or twenty six thousand dollars to be reallocated. And we would like to get it out this year for what's going on. So the brief survey is gonna tell us how much more money is available. And then I'm hoping we go back to the list because the cutoff line was right at the cemetery.
Okay.
Their, their, their plans weekend. So it may be a thing where we're gonna reach back out to these people and say, hey, show us what you got, what's what we can do, and this is what we could do, and this is what you have for receipts. So it still has a shot. And we've been all put for it very hard uh from the Roslin group. Uh, and then I've been pushing pretty hard on the commissioners as I've met with another one last Friday. And then a side note, I had a meeting with a, one of the commissioners on Friday that we were talking about infrastructure issues. Um, and one, he, it's a very loose discussion, but the county wants to be more involved, hopefully, maybe. We don't know what's gonna happen with reopen America money. Um, they want to get an economic development plan put together for the county. Um, we're a very diverse county and uh we're so different up here in upper county from lower county that uh it's not a one size fits all kind of group. So um, some of the things that came up were a sawmill in upper county. Now, we've got logs here, why don't we have a mill here? So we'll see what happens with it. I think that my discussion on Friday, I believe the commissioners are gonna pay for that study themselves and not ask the municipalities for any additional funding based on my discussion Friday. I did promise that what what they did come up with, we would get behind. Not dollar wise, but we would get behind if we can help with something, we sure would and promote it. But we don't have the dollars to put into an economic development plan for the whole county. And Jeff Shearer was there. We both agreed and talked after the meeting. Um, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to Jeff since, but my meeting Friday was, I think the county's gonna pay for it exclusively is is the sound of it. We have another discussion coming up in another three, four weeks, so we can go back. And Jeff may want to add something to that, too. Yep, I think you summed it up, Tom. It was just, it's once again, they wanted us to help buy a plan that we could put on our shelf.
Okay, okay, okay.
Nice job.
Thank you, cog members.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you very much. I've got a list if nobody's ready to go. I always have a list. Um, first, cemetery cleanup last week, the other week was fantastic. Thank you to the hundred plus volunteers that showed up from not just our community, from the west side, all over. We had visitors coming, uh, some with family, some with no family, just enjoyed the day. So huge shout out to the cemetery cleanup. It was a huge success. Um, a big thanks to the R D A who uh made a donation to pay for all the debris uh funding that was taken to the dump. So that was great. I'll get with the city and we'll get that all taken care of. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. Um, number two, on uh June twenty first, six o'clock, that will be a for terra public meeting. I encourage every individual in the city of Roslin to sign up and please give your opinion on what you'd like to see on that piece of property and um an encouragement or disencouragement. All of it needs to be put out there. So please, uh, on the twenty first of June, six o'clock, look for that coming out. It'll be in the mail. It'll be posted on site if you could sign up for that. Um, and then a couple other sort of things on note. Um. One is, I think it was la, about nine months ago, I brought up about trying to firewise the last nine hundred feet of the transmission line. Um, that it's a tough section. It's a probably about three to four days, possibly five uh to finish that last section. And as I'm I'm hearing all this transmission line talk in the past six months, um and and obviously the the public's really anxious about getting something going with the transmission line just as well as us in public works. I think it's important that we actually look at that and and try to fund that with the water fund because it is part of the water funding uh maintenance. And we're gonna be needing to take officials up there and show them that transmission line. And I think it's important that if we show what we've done um maintaining the line, so it it's visibly accessible all the way through. It'll show that we've actually sort of know what we're doing. Um, we care about the line. Um, it's a good way to show and tell the line and we're missing nine hundred feet of it. And so I'm sort of curious if um if that's something we could designate the fire crew that's gonna be starting for. It's a, it's a great area to actually do training in um up there. Um, I have talked to uh the R F D, uh, Roslin Fire Department about it and um they were okay with my comments, but um that's something I'd like to know um through council or mayor, if that's something we can discuss about moving forward on the last nine hundred feet of transmission line clearing up there this year.
I see you do it.
If it's a priority, for sure.
You know, depending on the crew's timing and the timeline, you know, that's certainly something that we can uh look at. I know Bubba has been checking that out up there as well. You know, unfortunately, this last party, it's a little difficult to drop trees uh and and so there's issues there. But the first thing that the fire crew has to get through is this alley brush out, because that was part of the So when they finish that, then I imagine there's gonna be much more time and much more labor available.
Yeah, I think.
Where the monies are qualified for even.
Okay, so the only thing, the only thing I want to watch out for is because as we move into the fire season, um, we're gonna have some sanctions as it gets warmer and drier since we've had such a dry spring. So that's just something I want to be aware of that. Um, be conscious of it, that um, you know, we have a a season for it. be conscious of it, that, um, you know, we have a, a season for it. So if we can just keep that on the map, I don't want to lose sight of it this year. Um, I think it'd be great to finally have that thing 100% brushed out after all these years and it hasn't been done. Um, and like I said, we will be taking up officials up there. Um, I'm sure there'll be at some point, possibly a politician will be taken up there for funding on the transmission line, and I think showing what we've done and, and that we're prepared for it is a, is a huge get. So, um, if you can just keep that in mind, that would be, that would be something I'd like to make sure we, we lean for. Okay?
Yep.
For sure.
Okay, and then one other item, um, and I've done this, um, this individual, um, through the city of Roslin or council, we, we discussed this. This individual of our city has asked, um, oh, about a year ago, if he would, could help sort of be sort of a representative with the 49, with 47 degrees north, um, with his background and so forth. And, and we've asked this resident, and, and I believe we all gave him an okay. It would be great to be a representative for Roslin and help keep us informed. Um, we're getting to that point with 47 degrees north that we really need to make a, a statement. Um, with everything coming through, um, there was a, there was a note in one of their statements that, um, a self-admitment's from 47 degrees north that basically 30 to 40% of the, of the needs, of the impact needs coming will be all that they will be able to cover. The rest will fall on you and I. So that could be up to 60% of the rest of our communities would fall on us. And I'm not sure that's exactly what you all expected when we watched Acadia sell the property to this company and, um, and that type of impact to us, let alone, we have our own infrastructure issues that we're going to be discussing, whether it's water lines, storms, sewer. Um, and we could have some increases slightly on those like we typically do every few years. So, um, I think it's important, I would like to, um, if it's all right, uh, we all know Tom, you're in, has been working on this and is heavily involved. Um, I would like to give him some time next council meeting to do a presentation to us council members to, to get this information to all of us. And, um, it'd be nice to make a unified statement together as, uh, city of Roslin and city council, um, that we send out, uh, with his background knowledge, if, uh, everybody would like to listen to that.
That's second.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Uh, if Tom is interested in doing that at the next meeting, uh, we can put it on the agenda.
That, that would be great. It'd be, it'd be nice to send out the white paper, um, prior to council, so everybody could sort of see an idea of what stuff was.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah, so that's, that would be something. I just want to make sure, um, that, um, he's done a lot of due diligence on this, and I think he's got really important information that not all of us understand. And, and I think it's important that we all hear it and we understand it, and, um, we have a unified message coming out of our city. And I think it's important to our city, and I think it's important to every one of our residents, um, that we do this.
Yep.
It's hugely important.
Okay, thank you.
Not just city of Roslin, but the entire area.
Yep, yep. And so anyways, that, that, that's it for my, my lengthy list as usual at the end of council. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And, um, I concur with that. And, and I also have a, a council concern, and, um, what I'd like to talk about is, um, uh, the, that we're, we're, we're basically overworking our, our city staff at this point. Um, I think we heard earlier about the backlog of permits in the planning department. Um, and what occurs to me is that, um, we, in years back, we actually, uh, had an, an independent, um, building inspection company that came in and did the building permits for us. And, uh, I think that we should return to that system for two reasons. One is, I mean, first and foremost is the fact that, um, we are basically overworking our staff. Um, they can't keep up. And number two, um, it's, as a matter of governance, it's just better policy if we separate those, those two functions. Um, and I'm not sure how we go about this. I don't know if this is something that council would vote on, or if it's something that the mayor would, um, pursue. But I would just really, I would just really ask that we return to the, the old system of having a, a building inspection company. And this would not necessarily, um, they would need to be paid, of course, but it, I believe that's something we could roll into the permit process itself. So it would not be an extra, um, burden on the city. So I guess my question is, how do we go about that? Do we put it on the, the council agenda, or does the, does the mayor move it forward? How does that happen?
I think we check what the cost is, because I believe we cut that out at one point, because it, it definitely has cost us more than what the subcontractor base, I believe, to sub that out to, I think it was permits Northwest or one of those or whatever it was. Uh, but I believe it's also a budget issue is why we're also doing it within our house with our qual, with our qualified inspectors. So that's something we should probably have to check budgeting to see what that cost us before we can manage and budget those together and see if they actually fit our budget.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be something that we could roll into the permit costs itself?
Well, we just increased our permit costs. We were looking at increased permit cost, I believe, about a month, about six weeks ago that came across our board. So I'm not sure if that reaffects that or not. That would have to come from administration.
Are, are you looking at,
Oh, go ahead.
Looking at a plans examiner and a building inspector, two different types of things? I mean, because there's a plans examiner. It's usually is a engineer that looks at stuff, signs off on it, then there's a building inspector piece to it. So two different, I, I guess, I'm trying to figure out what, is that what you're, that's how it used to be in the past, sometimes.
Okay, well, I mean, the, the plant, the planning part would be dealt with by our plan, planner, I would assume. Um,
I'm certainly a plans examiner. Plans examiner looks at actual plans of a building.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not advocating that, that we, we employ a plans examiner. Um, I, but I am saying that, that I know, I mean, just for my, for myself, I know that when I, you know, did some work on, on this little, um, studio building in back of my house years back, um, I went to the planning department, I got my plans approved, and then a separate building inspector came around, who was not a city employee. It was someone that was, you know, the, the, the city, um, hired. Um, but, um, I'm just wondering if there's some way to, to roll that cost into the permit, into the permit itself, so that we could take some pressure off, um, uh, Michelle, um, and also Sarah.
So just for the record, we have two plans examiners on staff, our engineer and our planner. And then Michelle, when we hired Michelle, one of the advantages to her skill set was that she is a qualified, uh, inspector. And which is the reason that we decided to pay extra, and it's also the reason that we no longer employ that company. Um, and I also know, and that company was, did very well for us, but they're also completely backlogged and, and don't even, aren't even based in this county. So I don't think that coming back to them or some other group would, uh, be advantageous to anybody trying to get inspections in, in our city. Because, you know, we would be the last ones on the list, and, and I think it would, might slow it down. Um, now, I'm not against, speaking of the budget side of things, I think it was Jeff that mentioned this. You know, if we could maybe bring in a half-time person or something, uh, qualified to help out beyond the wonderful work that the librarian does, and especially if we are able to open the library in the next year. You know, we would definitely need another person in here. Uh, you know, we did, uh, kind of, we don't have a clerk anymore. We, I mean, we have a clerk, but, uh, there is a kind of a vacant position there. And I, I think that another employee could definitely help the, the workload of everybody in here. But I don't know that necessarily bringing on, uh, a building inspector, uh, from an outside company would accomplish what, you know, ultimately, what all of you and, and myself and staff would like to see have happen, which is that they're not so overwhelmed and, and things don't take maybe as long. And I'd also like to say, you know, we get this a lot. I get these calls all the time and emails. And the fact is, is if you're trying to build a house in Kitatown, or the county, or King County, or Snohomish County, the, the weight on all these things is the same, if not worse, everywhere else. So anytime somebody tells me that it's, it, Roslin's the worst that they've ever seen, I, I don't even listen to them anymore. It's like, well, okay then. You know, then maybe you should look at a building somewhere else. Because we are not worse than anybody else. And if you don't believe me, go buy some land in unincorporated Kitatown County around Ellensburg and try to build a house and see how quickly your plans and your inspections go. Sorry for the vent there.
Well, that's okay, but I mean, it's, it's still, um, would, it would take, um, some pressure off, off our city staff. Um, but maybe, maybe we can accomplish that by, um, hiring another administrative person as well.
Yeah, Kathy, I think that is the solution. I, I, you know, because the pressure is all the way around. I mean, Sarah's under as much pressure as Michelle. And I, I don't know necessarily that inspections are slowing anything down any more than any other one of these processes. So, and, and like was mentioned before, you know, we're getting up to where we're going to have, uh, the budget workshop. And, uh, we haven't said it yet, but we will in, in two weeks. And, uh, and, and that's definitely something I'm going to bring to the table, that, uh, you know, we need to increase staffing a little bit, if not a full-time employee.
Okay.
Thank you for the concerns, though, Kathy.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.